Good evening again and welcome to the Board of Education meeting. Today is Monday, October 15th. Please stand and join me in the crouch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of the White Plains City School District is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
This evening we'd like to ask for your participation in a moment of silence as we remember former staff members Rose Marie Bellantoni, Sally Mallett, and William Bill Smythe. Thank you.
Next, do we have any announcements from the board?
I'll mention a few things. So, Rose Marie and I went to Church Street School and harvested carrots with the first graders, which was-
Right there. There's a picture of them, to tell you the truth.
Good thing he wasn't the one of us dancing or whatever.
I'm saving that one.
Carrots, carrots. But it's a really great school project. It involves all the students, all the classes. It's engaged, engaging. The kids really see the fruits or the vegetables of their labors. You know, they start with the seeds, they plant, they watch things grow, they harvest, they actually organize a sale, a farmer's market. So kids are involved in sort of the advertising and the selling, and they raise money, which they then contribute to charity. So it's just a real experiential project, and I think the kids got a lot out of it. And I guess I'll just mention I went to PTA council meeting, well-attended, beginning of the year, so always really informative. And also the special needs coffee talk that Debbie Algarten ran, and also very well-attended, and I think that the parents really find them very valuable. It's a real opportunity to talk, to ask questions, to get answers, and lots of information.
Just the football team's killing it.
Two things. We, it was this month, right? I'm confused, I missed last month's board meeting. But this month we attended the conversation with the Low-Hut reporter, Colleen Wilson, at the high school that we hosted. It was a great conversation, talking about media's role in covering education issues. It was well-attended, and I think we're gonna do it again. I also had an opportunity today as a teacher to attend a collegial circle up at Westchester Putnam Bowses, and the workshop was led by one of our directors of- Jennifer Hemmings, director of reading and ELA literacy, is it?
ELA coordinator.
That's it, yeah. So she attended, she had the workshop with five other reading teachers from White Plains. So it was great to be there as a teacher and have the presenter be from my home district and be represented there with five other reading teachers from White Plains. That was exciting.
Just to touch on a few things very quickly. I had an opportunity to attend two back-to-school nights, at Highlands and at the high school. So lots of great energy, great teachers, great things going on. The facilities look terrific. And as a parent, I've had an opportunity in quite a bit of field hockey and modified swimming, and it's all there. So it's going well, and again, the kids are really excited, their coaches are terrific, and it really just shows the spirit of the district.
Another big win today.
Field hockey won and modified won today. They were in the pan for modified swimming, and field hockey beat Croton 6-0.
Alright.
One more game, they play Merritt.
That's a tough one.
From a sports perspective, I can say that the girl swim team does have a state qualifier in the 500, in the 500 free, and that's a really good qualifying.
She's in the eighth grade?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. She's in eighth grade, and a really solid time and talent that's gonna be with us for a while.
Tremendous.
It's gonna be exciting to see her swim and see what she can do for our school. And I'll just, you know, just echo, you know, the Church Street trip. It was awesome to be there with the kids, and, you know, they look at you and they see you as adults, and as long as you're interested in what they're interested in, you know, they will dance with you, they will chant with you, they will do anything that's fun with you. So the trip to Church Street was really great with the students and being able to chant carrots and hold up a carrot, and to see how happy they were, but to know the bigger picture of what that carrot actually meant and what it will bring. So, that's it. So next we have school board recognition.
Yeah, school board recognition week. And I say this every year, and I mean it every year. A lot of folks don't realize that the members of the Board of Education are completely voluntary, and they put in countless hours. It is a full-time job, and on behalf of the district, and certainly on behalf of the administrative team, we'd like to say thank you very much to you. It begins on the 22nd, but I also know, more important than that, we have some members of our school community here this evening that have come to say thank you as well. So who is first, Mrs. Schoenfeld?
I believe it's Carol Lyons.
Mrs. Lyons, the president of the WPTA.
Hello.
Hi, Carol.
So, as you know, the work of a school board member is an awesome undertaking, and it is one that is critical to the success of our society. If we didn't have school boards, how would our public education systems run? So I just wanna begin by saying that. So on behalf of the White Plains Teachers Association, I'd like to take this opportunity to express our gratitude for your steadfast leadership. You guys have been very steady, open, and receptive. Thank you for your stewardship. We have the tools and resources we need to help our students unlock their infinite and unique potential every day. And I reference the vision statement because this board has consistently demonstrated their devotion to the dreams of our students. Rose Marie says it all the time. Cheryl Brady, Rose Marie Eller, Jim Ricky, Kane Latitza, Roslovich, who's not here, Charlie Norris from Randy Stein, you are a special group who have selflessly volunteered countless hours of your life. In fact, Michelle calculated how many years you have together in service. It's 65 years. You guys look amazing.
We're retired.
You look really good. So your belief in the transformational power of public education is clear in the amount of hours that you devote to the school district.
Sixty, so do fifty.
So we just wanna thank you for your leadership and ongoing support. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lassner?
Mrs. Lassner is the president of the Administrators Association.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here this evening as the president of the Administrators and Supervisors Association. I'm here to extend our gratitude to the White Plains Board of Education for their ongoing active participation and advocacy to both students and staff here in the district. Professionalism, accessibility, participation, and concern for issues brought forth are notable traits of our board and its members. This is not true of all boards. I think back to when I was pursuing my administrative degree, and one of the classes required that we go visit neighboring districts in Westchester and observe a board meeting. And it was very different, starkly different, from my experience here in White Plains. So when we say that we are grateful and echoing what Ms. Lyons said, it is our sincerest thanks that we have a board who is present and vocal the way you are. As an administrator, as a parent of a White Plains student, as a resident of the community, I feel fortunate to work with the board throughout the year. It is with sincere appreciation that I thank you for all that you do, 12 months a year, even when many of us may not be here on vacation. They are fielding questions, planning, and spending countless hours working with us so that we can work together to unlock the infinite and unique potential of each student every day. Let's make 2018-19 the best year yet for the White Plains City School District. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob Diller-Leiter, representing the CSEA.
Hey, Rob.
Hey, Rob.
Rob Diller-Leiter, second vice president of CSEA. I left my speech at home. On behalf of Dell Hertzberg and all the CSEA workers, we'd like to thank you for your tireless and thoughtless work that you continually strive to make us happy every day. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Michael Villafane of PTA Council, and James Dean.
James Dean?
Good evening. Michael Villafane and James Dean, on behalf of the PTA Council and all the PTA units in the district. We're here in advance of New York State School Board Recognition Week to offer our sincere thanks for the work each and every one of you do to support the White Plains schools and therefore our children's education. It's a huge job to ensure that the words in the, does that sound familiar? In the new vision statement, "We aspire to unlock the infinite and unique potential of each student every day, become actionable, to ensure safe schools and outstanding educational opportunities for all." Even then, our understanding of what goes on behind the scenes only scratches the surface of the work you do, work that takes you away from your family and professional lives. We deeply appreciate your ongoing partnership with the White Plains PTA and our great hopes for the future that we can attain together. At times it may seem like thankless work, but we really, really thank you for this incredibly important volunteer community service that you all do.
Thank you.
Well, and thank you very much, all of you, for your partnership. And again, thank you to the Board of Education. You are tremendous public servants and supporters of our children, and the truth is, we really can't do anything that we do without your support. So thank you very, very much. We also have this evening, and this is a little bit, I know Mrs. Schoenfeld does not like when we go off agenda, but this is a little bit off agenda this evening. So feel just bear with me. Mr. Wolf, you'll join me at the podium. This is a, this is a special, special award this evening, and Nick and I both thought this would be an opportune time to give it. We were so proud of White Plains, and we're so proud of the White Plains City School District. But, but there is somebody who may be even more proud than us at times, and I'm gonna step aside and let Nick introduce this person, and we can recognize her.
Right. Well, on behalf of the Video Producers of America, they contacted us and said, "We have something we want to award." And we have a really fine award for the best school video, if you haven't seen it, ever.
Ever.
Right. In White Plains, and Michelle is the associate producer, and they recognized her efforts and her work in putting this together and the collaboration, and she has like national Emmy award.
Hold on, hold on. Beat, beat! You can't walk away from it. And Michelle won the lottery about that reason as well. She did, yeah.
Wait, how much? I didn't tell you. This is a complete surprise, and I thank you very much. And I have to say that the video was so much fun doing it that I, maybe I have a new career. But I thank you very much. That's very sweet of you, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Of course, the trouble is, the sequel is always harder to do. So the sequel's gotta be even better, it's a big, yeah.
I'll start.
Wow, that's great.
Don't lose your beer, crack it later.
Awesome.
That's great.
That's a, that's a nice recognition, and certainly well-deserved, and a nice surprise for all of us. So we share in your happiness, but to say on behalf of the board, Michelle, well-deserved. We know the work that went into that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So gold.
Yep.
Nice.
It is nice. So next, any communications now that we throw you off track?
No.
She's locked back.
I know.
Locked back.
Locked and ready. So next, we have, do we have any public participation for tonight? Because if we did, there's something I'd like to say as a preamble. But we don't, so, okay. Just a cricket. Yeah. So next, we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Eller. We, we, this evening have on the agenda the presentation of the fiscal, 2018 fiscal audit in the Board of Education, and the audit committee met with Principal David Tellier a couple of weeks ago, right? And went through, went through the audit extensively. And unfortunately, this evening, he can't be with us due to an emergency. However, as a reminder, he commended the district for its timeliness of accounting, closing, and making sure that we were audit-ready and that we were cooperative in the process. There was a clean or unmodified audit report in terms of our financial position, a positive change in the general fund, which is mostly attributed to changes in expenditures from TRS and ERS, as well as health benefits, were the main contributors. The district is within the allowable limits for the New York State tax cap and fund balance limitations, good financial position for the upcoming fiscal year, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls were identified, no current-year recommendations, and nine prior-year recommendations were identified, again, with five that have been fully implemented or remediated, and four that are in the process of being remediated through corrective action. So all in all, a very positive outcome on this year's, or last year's audit. Thank you very much to Dr. Vikaro Teish and the Business Department and all the folks up there for all of your support. And I don't know if I missed anything from the audit committee. Well, thank you.
Thank you. No, I would just second what Dr. Rick has said. Dr. Stein, Dr. Brady, myself are on the Finance Committee along with Craig Mountshine and Tim Donahoe, and really thank them for their volunteerism and agreement in being on that committee. As we saw with the revenue, with the budget, very strong revenues. There's a lot of receivables that had been on the books, and the Finance Department went out, and they got that. They went and they, they made sure that we received those monies, so that was great work. There was a little bit of a change in our accounting reporting structure. There was some acceleration of how we report our obligations for other post-employment benefits. It's called OPEV, but basically it's retiree healthcare, so if the average reader-
It's required.
Which is required, exactly. So if the average reader were kinda look at our financial reports, they would see that it really looks like things have kind of turned and changed from year to year. And it's not that our material, we have changed our position at all. Nothing has really transactioned. It's just a matter of how we report our finances has been, has changed from the government accounting standards boards, and we're all complying with that. So the White Plains City School District, along with every other school district in the state, had the same change this year. So again, as we look at that, and we know these financials will be up on the webpage, and they're reported to the state, and I think we're in a strong position with making sure that our receivables are good, and our financial position is good with our legal proceedings for tax surcharges as well, because we don't wanna have to go out and borrow for those monies unfortunately the way we did some years back.
And do you can change for a legal, like, does it not affect our operating?
Thank you, great point. So, yeah, exactly. Anne just said that our operating budget is the same, and it doesn't, it doesn't affect our operating results or the way we do our business. It's just a matter, it's a reporting issue. And it was a significant reporting issue, that's why I just wanted to bring it up here. And again, it was spoken of, we spent some time talking about it with the Finance Committee.
And I'll just add that it is too bad that the auditors are not here because they're really helpful and explain things very clearly. So it's too bad that they can't do that tonight, but just so we know, they've really done a very good job.
Thank you. So before I move into the rest of the superintendent's report, which will also include reports on state assessments and social-emotional learning, I do want to welcome and acknowledge our student representative. If you wouldn't mind, would you, would you go to the podium and introduce yourself to everybody? And thank you very much, this is Jackson's counterpart. Also, also a seat officer as well, right?
Yes, we're both seat officers.
Right.
Hello. Okay, cool. Hi, I am Pilar Sedon. I am a senior at White Plains High School. I am Jackson's counterpart. We are both co-representatives for the students in White Plains City School District. Unfortunately, Jackson is sick, so he couldn't be here tonight. But yeah, so I'm really excited to be here, and I can't wait to get to work.
Welcome.
Welcome, Laura.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. So again, thanks to the board, and I know you guys love that picture. We are in the process of formulating a community partnership with White Plains Hospital to receive training and supplies for Stop the Bleed. Some of you may be familiar with Stop the Bleed. This was a movement that became prominent in the country to provide training for traumatic injury care to folks who work in schools with students. And ultimately, what we hope to be able to accomplish in our partnership with White Plains Hospital is to not only bring in the Stop the Bleed kits to be installed where our AEDs are in our buildings, but also provide training to all of our school nurses, as well as volunteers from within the district, so that as many people as possible can be trained in this process and participate in what we think will be a first in terms of hospital-law enforcement, school district partnership in doing this training and working with White Plains Hospital to participate in a research study that hopefully will help inform the process for other school districts in the future as well. So this is work that's ongoing, but it's exciting, and will bring additional enrichment to the district. We will be moving forward with board docs in the coming months, and I believe, right, Mrs. Schoenfeld, we're set for training for the board on the 8th, November 8th?
November 7th and 8th.
November 7th and 8th. So just as a reminder there, and of course we'll remind you moving forward. So much happening in the district all the time, whether it be open houses, community picnics. We had Hispanic Heritage Month, PTA meetings, other special events, Dads and Special People Take Your Children to Work Day, all of these types of things. Just tons happening within the district. And it's been a great month and a couple of weeks. School spirit is all over the place, as you know. Merritt Avenue School, the Winners, and M.A.S. is here.
Show that spirit!
Winners of the New 12 School District Challenge, which was quite, I mean, I certainly was not surprised at all, but, you know, it was quite fascinating for an elementary school to receive somewhere close to 27,000 votes, I think, you know? Took down giant high schools and everything. But, but great stuff. We've had a tremendous fall athletic season as well, which is still ongoing. It seems almost every week we have a player, a potential player of the week, or potential game of the week in Low-Hut. So it's really, it's been a great opening, and tons, tons happening. We also had a real fun homecoming just this past Friday, where we also, of course, had a big win, which was great for our seniors and our pep rally. And we had the Tiger Cubs attend one of our football games. And this was something that I know Dr. Latitza's been talking about for a couple of years, bringing the little guys and gals out to be able to celebrate with the high school kids during, during the football game, and that was a lot of fun as well. So we'll be looking forward to more of that coming in the future. White Plains basics, conversations related to the basics is underway now. We actually met with some of our community partners from our pre-Ks this afternoon to gain some insight and information from them on how we can best move forward. And for those of you who weren't familiar with the basics, there they are. Maximize love, manage stress, talk, sing, and point, count, group, and compare, explore through movement and play, and read, and discuss stories. And essentially, these five points, we believe, and so does a number, or so do a number of other school districts and cities, that by highlighting these, we will help children as from birth, really, all the way through age three, maybe through five, to be school-ready and also develop positively and healthy. So this is gonna be an ongoing conversation as we move forward.
And this is a national program.
Yeah.
It's great to be part of it.
Yeah, yeah. And we're working with, we're working with Ron Ferguson, Dr. Ferguson out of Harvard, right now to sort of get everything set up for here in White Plains. And it's important to note that this is not a school district initiative. This is really a community initiative. So this will be a conversation that really needs to take place throughout our community. Of course, our schools and our educators will be there to support it moving forward, but we wanna have this conversation with folks out in the community so that it becomes part of what we do for our kids here in White Plains. We'll be reviewing all of our policy and revising where necessary, and of course, this will be an ongoing work, and periodically draft policy will come forward for the Board of Education to consider for first reading and second reading, and we're working to revise all areas of district policy manual moving forward as well. So we'll have, we'll be having a policy committee meeting shortly. Michelle and I are actually setting that all up, and we'll be getting a big stack of paperwork to go through for weekend reading. Now, it is my absolute pleasure to present Dr. Hand, who is gonna talk to us about the New York State data for, New York State High Stakes Assessment data for 2017, 2018, which is interesting because you can't compare, and I don't wanna take seal Dr. Hand's thunder, but the State Department of Education has indicated that we cannot compare this year's scores, last year's scores, so we'll watch Deb navigate that conversation.
We can't repeat that enough.
We can't repeat that enough, right. We also had the opportunity to sit down with John Bailey on People to Be Heard last Friday, which was a lot of fun, and he took us through sort of the odyssey of High Stakes Assessment, and we had a good conversation there. So, Dr. Hand, you let me know, and I'll flip this slide. Or if you go too long, I'll just flip the slides.
I'll look up and say, "What am I doing?" So I wanna start by just saying thank you for providing me with the opportunity, you can flip the slide, to review the results from the 2018 New York State ELA and Math Assessments and the New York State Region's results. In 2018, New York State made changes to the design of the three-through-eight assessments. Due to the state's new two-session test design and performance standards, we are cautioned by the state that the 2018 Grades 3-8 ELA and Math results cannot be compared with prior-year results. The new baseline established this year will enable comparisons with student scores in 2019, 2020, and hopefully beyond. Please keep this in mind as we go through the presentation, as we will be looking at trends across years, knowing that direct comparisons cannot be made. In 2018, 48% of our third graders scored a Level 3 or a 4 on the ELA assessment. 41% of our fourth graders scored a Level 3 or 4, and 36% of our fifth graders demonstrated proficiency by scoring a Level 3 or 4 on the assessment. When compared to the previous year, we are seeing a slight gain in proficiency in third and fourth grade, or as in the case of fifth grade, stability from year to year. It's important to note that the state average for fifth grade was 37%, so we are comparable with state averages. If you look at them without looking at other data, it's really difficult to analyze this in isolation. So it's hard enough that we can't compare it to previous years. So hopefully, by looking at trends, it'll help. 54% of our sixth graders demonstrated proficiency on the New York State ELA assessment, while 46% of our seventh graders and 47% of our eighth graders demonstrated proficiency respectively on their grade level assessments. Looking at the graphs, you will see strong gains over the years. Again, cautioning that direct correlations and comparisons cannot be made. We are looking more at the upward trends in the percentage of students demonstrating proficiency. Considering the state averages in 2018, our sixth and seventh grade scores exceeded the state averages, and our eighth grade scores were in alignment with state averages. Eighth grade, I think, was 47, 47, our performance was 47, and the state average was 48. But in sixth and seventh grade, our performance was higher. Overall, our results in grades 3-8 on the New York State ELA assessments illustrated a change in proficiency from 38% in 2017 to 45% in 2018. Looking at the cohort data over three years, and cohort data is the students in, if you look at the first chart, the students that were going from the cohort 3 through 5, the fifth graders, were the fifth graders who were taking the test in 2018. That was last year. So that's the cohort as it went through the grade levels to get to, to get to that grade level. So looking at the cohort data over three years, we noticed that in grades 3 through 5th, third through 5th, there is a dip in the percentages of students demonstrating proficiency, which is also reflected in state averages. However, in our fourth to sixth grade cohort, we see a dip in- a dip in grade 5 and then a strong gain in grade 6. In our fifth through 7th and sixth through 8th grade cohorts, we see steady gains across the three years, with strong gains from 5th to 7th grade in our 5th to 7th grade cohort, and again, a strong gain from 7th to 8th grade in our 6th to 8th grade cohort. Now, looking at math. In 2018, 48% of our third graders demonstrated proficiency on the New York State Math Assessment by scoring a performance level of 3 or 4. In grade 4, the percentage of students demonstrating proficiency was 41%. And in grade 5, the percentage of students demonstrating proficiency was 42. Looking at trends, we can see growth in our third grade over time, while 4th and 5th grade illustrate slight fluctuations from year to year. In grade 6, 42% of our students demonstrated proficiency on the New York State Math Assessment, while 50% of our students in grade 7 demonstrated proficiency on the New York State Math Assessment. In grade 8, New York State results don't include the students who are taking Regions exams, so the data isn't an accurate reflection of our students' performance. But we will look at the grade 8 Regions results and data a bit later in the presentation. Overall, in grades 3 through 8, our New York State results illustrated a change in proficiency from 39% in 2017 to 41% in 2018. And again, looking at our cohort data, we noticed that our cohort performance had been stable as students moved from 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade, and pretty much the same with our 6th grade cohort as they moved from 4th to 5th to 6th grade. In our 5th to 7th grade cohort, there was a gain in 7th grade performance. In the 6th to 8th grade cohort, there were steady gains in proficiency as this cohort of students moved through middle school. In this slide, we have added the students who are taking the Regions for 8th grade, which brings us to 51%. So along with the changes in the test design from three days to two days, and other factors that have been adjusted over time to the assessments themselves, including moving from timed assessments to untimed assessments, student refusals to take the test have added another challenge to interpreting results. 14% of our students were noted as refusing the New York State ELA Assessment in 2018. Of those 14%, 17.7% scored a Level 1 on the 2017 test, 15.7 had a score of Level 2 on the 2017 test, 7.9 scored a Level 3 on the 2017 test, and 1.3% scored a Level 4 on the 2017 test. Students with disability made up 18.8% of the 14%. So you have to remember that we're always talking about the 14% refusal. And Ls were 11.7% of the 14% refusal rate, and 56.5% of the 14% were economically disadvantaged. So our, you know, student refusals or quote-unquote opt-outs really do have, you know, a demographic structure that we see across the district, as well as a distribution of test scores for the students who did take the year prior the test. It's very similar to what we'd see, you know, that would be illustrated in our general population, or our broader population. And then for the math test refusal, for math test assessments, student refusals had a similar pattern. The percentage of refusals was slightly higher in math than in ELA. 16.7 of our students were recorded as refusing to take the New York State Math Assessment in 2018. 17.9 of the 16.7% who took the 2017 test scored a Level 1 on it, 12.5 scored a Level 2, 5.3 scored a Level 3, and 2.1 scored a Level 4. 22.6 were students with disabilities, and 14% were English language learners, and 60.1% were economically disadvantaged. Again, of that 16.7, students who refused to take the test. It is worthy to note that student refusals are inconsistent, with some students refusing to take the assessment in previous years, while others had taken the previous year's assessment and received a score as noted in the percentages presented in, as the percentages presented in the slide. Say that three times fast. So interpreting the data, and I have three asterisks here because I have gains, and it's really looking at the upward trends, right? So it's very hard in isolation when you think of how hard our teachers are working and our administrators are working to make sure that student performance is as accurately as possible reflected on these New York State assessments, and they keep on changing the playing field. So, you know, when you're looking at this trend data from 2015 to 2018, we are abiding by the state, and we're not making these direct comparisons. But we do have to celebrate and hope that the state is providing us with an assessment that has, you know, the level of credibility that we can say that we're making progress with this. So upward trends. Steady upward trends in ELA between 2015 and 2018 are being made in grades 6 through 8. From 2015 to 2018, grade 6 data has illustrated a gain in proficiency from 28 to 54%. In the same years, grade 7 data illustrated a gain in proficiency from 26 to 46, and in grade 8, illustrated a gain in proficiency from 29 to 47%. Strong cohort performance in ELA from 2015 to 2018 for the grades, for grades 5 through 7 and 6 through 8 cohorts was noticed. The 5 through 7 cohort data has illustrated a gain in proficiency from 33% when they started as fifth graders to 46% as seventh graders. And from 6th to 8th grade cohort during the same years illustrated a gain from 33% as sixth graders to 47% as eighth graders. Steady gains in math from 2015 to 2018 are being made in grades 3 and 7. From 2015 to 2018, grade 3 data has illustrated a gain in proficiency from 35 to 48. And from 2015 to 2018, grade 7 data has illustrated a gain in proficiency from 26 to 50. I looked solely where I saw a constant trend. So if I saw dips, I didn't include that, but where I saw like a nice sweep trend, trend that we were going up. Strong cohort performance in math, 2015 to 2018, for the 6th through 8th grade cohort. From 2015 to 2018, the 6th through 8th cohort data has illustrated a gain in proficiency from 28% to 51%. Of course, when we're including the students taking the Algebra Regions or the Geometry Regions in grade 8. And in 2018, the proficiency of grade 8 students scoring at above 65% on the Algebra Regions was 98%. And in 2018, the proficiency of grade 8 students scoring at or above 65 on the Geometry Regions was 100% for that cohort of students. So what are our challenges in our areas for growth? Challenges in tracking the data longitudinally include the number of test refusals, along with the changes in the test length and the format from year to year. Changing the playing field has made it difficult. Improving the performance of our subgroups, especially special education and limited English proficient students, that's the LET that's listed on the slide, sorry for the acronym, especially those subgroup populations, proficient students, and, I'm sorry, is another challenge that we are committed to, which is making sure that we see growth in those areas. This year's results illustrated slight gains in both subgroup populations. So while we're moving in the right direction, we still have work to do. Areas for growth include continuing to improve our resources and refine our instructional practices, which we do every day in education. For example, in this current school year, we have upgraded to Envision 2.0 in math for grades K through 2, and will follow with that with an upgrade in grades 3 through 5 in the 2019-2020 school year. In ELA, we have made significant improvements to our classroom libraries, and we have been rolling out the TC units in reading and writing through the grade levels K through 5. In middle school, we implemented the Big Ideas Math Program and have also made improvements and adjustments to the ELA curriculum and instructional practices. Our work is to create rigorous learning experiences that cognitively engage students to comprehend complex text, think critically, and develop a mastery of mathematical concepts, as well as fluency in computation. Another area for growth is to encourage teachers to share within and across grade levels, and to encourage principals and teachers to share across schools so that we can learn from each other's successes, while building and sustaining collaborative effort of continuous improvement and teamwork across the district. Our final two slides illustrate our New York State Regions results. In 8th grade, our students, if they are accelerated in mathematics, take the Algebra 1 Regions and/or Geometry Regions. 98.4% of the students earned a score of 65 or better on the Algebra 1 Regions, and 100% of the students taking the Geometry Regions earned a score of 65% or better. 92.7% of the students taking the Earth Science Regions in 8th grade scored a 65% or better. So I'm very proud of those results, yeah.
Just a quick question. So the students, for example, if they don't, you know, pass for the 65 or better, do we know how many of them take the exam again, for example, in the summer? And of those students, do they then pass?
Well, they would take the exam again either over the summer, or they would take it as freshmen or sophomores when they, when they're going towards high school, because you have to remember that this is accelerated. So they are taking the Regions as either 7th or 8th graders, and this is 8th grade data. So they could.
So they could take it in the summer?
Yes, they could.
But we don't know if they did, or we're not?
No, I would have to look into the individual students. I can do that. And then finally, at our high school, our 2018 Regions results were fairly consistent with the 2017 results. Algebra results, again, don't include the students taking the exam in grade 7 or grade 8. So these are the students that are taking it after that accelerated math program, not including them. And this was also the first year for the Global History Transition Exam, which we had an 84% passing rate for. So after I read through all of those numbers, I just want to say, thank you for your time and attention. It's, you know, just to go through the percentages is not an easy, it's not a very conversational presentation to do. But as a reminder, New York State standardized test results are only one measure of a student's grade, grade level performance in ELA and in math. It's important to consider these data points from the standardized assessments within the broader context of a student's academic profile, which obviously includes the work that a child does every single day in their classroom through their student work samples, report card grades, classroom assessments, reading levels, topic texts in mathematics, quarterly assessments where applicable, common formative assessments that we have. There are so many other ways of measuring a student's performance and achievement in school, not to even mention all of the arts and music and sciences and social studies that we have as well, and various subject areas. So, you know, just keep in mind that it is a snapshot, and we continually strive to, you know, to make sure that every single student does as well as they can. And, you know, we're proud of the work that we've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Hand, thank you very much. I know, I know how hard you worked on this, and I know how hard it continued to work. And we, you know, just so...
It's so exciting and needed.
Well, you know, listen, I think, I think you made a really tremendous point, and for moms and dads who may be watching at home later on, I think, you know, to reiterate it wouldn't hurt. High-stakes standardized assessments are a singular snapshot in time of student performance. They do not, they do not bring together the whole child. They do not give a complete picture of student achievement. And I think this board has always been very, very progressive in an understanding of that. We're starting to see that sort of happen everywhere, which is great, because, you know, let's face it, we got these scores back in October.
That's true.
Right? We got these scores back, these scores were received in October. Now, if you were really going to use these scores when you were trying to create an educational plan for a child, you'd be a month late. You know, and that's why it's important for parents and guardians to understand that the folks who I think are closest to our kids are the ones who are going to be able to best tell us how our children are doing. And that's why we always say, you know, talk to your teachers first, because our faculty members and our staff members are there with our children, and they're watching them grow each and every day. Now, that is not to say that assessment is not important, but the important thing to remember is there are all kinds of assessments, and this is one singular kind of assessment. Yep. Standardized assessments unlocking the unique and infinite potential. Yes, indeed. Thank you, Dr. Hand.
And can I just add, I mean, this, we don't make excuses, right? So, you know, we're all about student growth and potential. But even in the Journal News, I think it was yesterday, there was an interview with, you're going to have to tell me, the Superintendent
Walter Moran.
Moran in Eastchester, who is the...
The president of the Lower Hudson Council of School Superintendents.
Intendents, who was interviewed and basically said the same thing about testing. It's a snapshot. It's, you know, a few hours in the life of a student across, you know, an academic year, and we have to look at kids holistically, so.
Thank you.
And we also have to give credit to the students who scored at a performance Level 1 or a performance Level 2, and they actually did everything that they could to answer as many questions correctly as they could. I mean, we were looking at, you know, the scale score to raw score conversions, and Level 1 students are getting 19 points on that exam out of 44, or, you know, a Level 2 student can be getting 30 points out of 44 points. So I think we have to change our thinking about what performance level I need and what I think we need to be for every student.
We can do a raw score to scale score conversion party if... Thanks, Dr. Hand. You set it up, we'll show up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deb. And Ms. Algarten is now going to come up. She's going to give us a snapshot into the social and emotional learning work that's taking place throughout the district, which is, again, a very important part of development. And, you know, when you talk about standardized assessments or even formative assessments, you don't necessarily measure these types of skills. But these, in fact, are the types of skills that I would argue make the world a better place in most instances. Ms. Algarten?
You gave me the perfect segue with the education of the whole child, so thank you for that. Thank you for the opportunity to share with the board and community this update on social emotional learning. For many years, White Plains has recognized the importance of educating the whole child. In White Plains, we know that a student must feel safe and supported in order to pursue their best learning. Tonight, our goal is to share the current trends in social emotional learning, best practices, and how ESA regulation and reauthorization and changing state regulations has impacted our work. Over the past several years, the New York State Education Department has been examining how to improve student outcomes. The authorization of ESA has increased emphasis on school climate and culture as a way to improve student outcomes. The blueprint for English as a new language student and students with disability, recent amendments to guidance regulations, health education regulations, along with guidance on social emotional learning, has provided districts with a roadmap to examine their current practices with regard to social emotional learning. Do we provide guidance services and access K-12 that help students set goals, understand their learning styles, and ultimately match their strengths to a post-secondary decision? Are our schools safe places for students to take risks with learning, be supported, and grow socially and emotionally? And do our students understand what good mental health looks and feels like, and more importantly, when to ask for help? The regulations are aligned to create these big ideas. Set and achieve positive goals, develop skills to manage emotions, establish and maintain positive relationships, and make positive decisions. And in White Plains, we're focused on growing a school climate in which the students can meet these goals. So what is social emotional learning? According to Castle, the premier organization spearheading this work, the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning, "social emotional learning is the process through which children, youth, and adults acquire and effectively apply the knowledge, attitudes, and skills necessary to understand and manage emotions, and set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, and establish and maintain positive relationships, and make responsible decisions." In other words, we are teaching our students how to pursue their aspirations and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world. I did not know that the, that the vision statement was the statement of the evening. Effective social emotional learning focuses on developing five core competencies. Self-awareness, what are my strengths and how do my thoughts affect my actions? Self-management, what skills and strategies help me cope? Social awareness, how do I take the perspective of others? Relationship skills, how do I maintain and develop positive relationships? And responsible decision-making. Schools are beginning to think about social emotional learning, much like we think about response to inter... response to intervention for academics. Multi-tiered systems of support provide varying intensity of services based on student need. Practices are evidence-based and accepts, accessible to all students, and these are a variety of types of supports that school districts provide to students. Our Tier One, or our classroom-based supports, are really widespread. Responsive classroom and developmental design serve as the foundation of our social emotional learning problem. Both evidence-based programs teach children how to take responsibility, make good choices, and be kind to their friends. In addition, we're doing significant work across the district on mindfulness, and learning about how trauma impacts students. Our teachers are weaving these practices into their classroom so that our social emotional learning is integrated, and not a standalone program that happens once a week in a classroom. When that's not, when classroom supports are not enough for students, a student may work with our social worker or psychologist, maybe they receive social skills training, maybe they have a behavior plan that supports their, their learning. Our PPS staff has spent the last three years being trained in dialectical behavioral therapy, or DBT. DBT is a research-based counseling strategy that helps students develop and utilize self-regulation skills. We also collaborate, collaborate with the community to provide wraparound at-home services, and this year, we're excited to be opening satellite mental health clinics with Andrus in two of our schools, Post Road and Highlands, with MAS and Church Street to follow quickly behind. Over the next few years, we will be systematically reviewing our social emotional program. The state will be providing a mandated climate survey, which will serve as our baseline. And from that baseline, we'll be asking ourselves questions such as, do our practices, our social emotional learning practices, support our strategic plan, access for all, improved attendance rates, and increased emotional wellness supports? Do our practices align to the state-recommended social emotional learning benchmarks? Do we, are we building a student's capacity around the five core competencies? And finally, as a result of our work, are our schools safe supportive environments for students and adults where the education of the whole child helps improve student learning outcomes?
Thank you very much, Ms. Allgarten.
Thank you. Thank you, Deb.
You know, and when we think about, when we think about what's assessed, and when we think about our children and the responsibility and the roles that schools play, you know, what you just recognized here, Deb, are some of the most critical components that need to be attended to before you can be concerned, or even attempt to move forward academically, right? So, you know, I'm really proud to tell you that the work that's happening in our classrooms, what our faculty and staff members are undertaking and achieving is really tremendous. And I'll also say this, our students as well, you know, and Pilar could tell you, is part of the CEE program, that work that our children are engaged in, and our young men and women as well, is really, is, in my opinion, groundbreaking, because they are having conversations that sometimes are even more difficult, or too difficult for adults to have.
Absolutely.
Which is, which is great. Okay, coming soon, PTA Council, right, Michael? Wednesday, right? We're ready. We also have County Executive Latimer and Chair, Chairman Boykin gonna be here at Ed House on Saturday to talk about all affairs Westchester County. Parent-teacher conferences are coming up, eighteenth, twenty-third, and twenty-fifth. Check, check the district calendar as well. We have the Budget Input Session, which will be taking place toward the end of the month, October twenty-second. Halloween events, including trunk or treat, which is being put on by the senior class this year, will be in the parking lot of White Plains High School, I think, four o'clock to six o'clock on Halloween, I think. Right? Okay. Plus, all other kinds of Halloween events that are taking place in the next few weeks. National Education Week will be, I'm sorry, Election, Election Day on the sixth, and remember, that's, it's a conference day for us, and schools are closed for kids. National Education Week is coming up on the twelfth November, and Veterans Day is also observed on the twelfth, and then we'll be back together again next month, before you know it, and it'll be time for turkeys, I guess.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Ms. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for the presentations. We appreciate them, and appreciate the work that went into them. Next, we're going to move on to summary of action items. We have twenty-two summary action items. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'd like to draw your attention to item number two, the recommended approval of following donations. School supplies from Joyce Ibers for Rochambeau School students, gift cards from Dr. Mira Schwartz and Jennifer Cambario for Rochambeau Schools PBIS Initiative, ping-pong cable from Shelley Chi, Chi for Highlands Middle School, twenty thousand dollars from KA Gems LLC for the high school, a framed portrait of George Washington from Anthony Russo for George Washington School. This is a, not the normal George Washington portrait, he says, that you normally see the half-painted one. It's a special one, so I'm looking forward to seeing that as well. So, thank you very much for, for all the donations, we are, we are grateful.
And Dr. Rika, I mean, certainly very generous donations. The one from KA Gems, it would be great if we could get some follow-up later on, on kind of what it was, what it's to be used for, and the initiative that the high school's using it for.
Sure thing.
It's very, very generous.
We also have a change on number six. Please remove the third one on number six, Nancy Wise.
Are there any other questions or comments? All in favor with the correction as noted?
Aye.
Next, we have, we'll move on to other actions. We have the recommended acceptance of the Treasury's report for July two thousand eighteen. May I have, for July two thousand eighteen, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommend, the recommended authorization of an increase to the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen general fund budget to fund reserve for employee benefit accrued liability. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
May I have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended acceptance of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen Step Up Grant Budget. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on that grant? That's awesome. May I have a motion? I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
I was blinded just by the grant. Next, we have the recommended acceptance of the Audit Committee minutes of the October first, two thousand eighteen meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended acceptance of an external, of external audit's report and management letter and the corrective action, active, action plan. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And that's the, the brief report that was read earlier, and we're sorry, the representative couldn't be here and extend our wishes for speedy recovery. All in favor?
Aye.
The recommend, we have the recommended acceptance of the attached budget calendar for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended authorization to appropriate the tax surcharge already reserved to increase the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget in the amount of one hundred fifty-nine thousand, two hundred thirty-eight dollars and six cents in order to refund taxes. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended authorization for the President of the Board of Education to execute the contract with H2M dated October sixteen for the architectural and engineering services, as per our backup information.
So moved. Second.
Questions?
Just a comment, I mean, this, this is part of our master plan work that, that the school district is working on, where there's over a dozen people, maybe two dozen community members, and staff members, and board members involved in this particular master plan project. It's a, we interviewed or listened to three different architectural firms, so there was quite, quite a number of, some time that was spent on that. We ended up with H2M, who were architects for our last bond project at Eastview, and again, this is all part of that pre-work, and we don't know if there's gonna be building, or what type of building, or what we're going to have, but this is all part of identifying what, what the district needs, and looking at different options, and really what's feasible, and what, what could happen as we look towards the school district for the next five, ten, fifteen years towards the future, using our demographic plans.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the revised amendment, the recommended approval of the ratification of the First Amendment of the Agreement with Family Services of Westchester for universal pre-case services, so we do have the revised edition in front of us. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any questions? I think they were all handled.
Yeah, we're good.
The revised. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended approval to designate Eileen McGuire, Principal of Amerenick Avenue School, as responsible for revolving petty cash funds. Okay. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the underbids and RFPs, the recommended acceptance of an award of signage and installation district-wide. May I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Are there any questions?
This is just to repeat, and then it's the RFQ for physical therapy and occupational therapy services as well.
Yeah, I had to pull that out.
Sorry, I don't need to.
Yep, yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended approval of a, of a resolution authorizing the district to join the Coalition of Agencies expressing concerns over proposed regulations on charitable contributions. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do you want to comment on that?
Sure, this is the, this is the resolution identifying White Plains City School District and the Board of Education as, as participants in the local coalition that was brought forward by Assemblywoman Amy Pollan, and included a number of municipalities and school districts, I believe seventeen, some, uh, school districts in the area, essentially coming together to offer commentary to the IRS related to the proposed regulations on the so-called SALT D state and local tax deduction regulation that, that the Common Period just recently ended on the eleventh, and essentially in some eighty-four-plus pages, the attorneys that, that came forward to work with, with the coalition, put forward an argument that the regulations as they're written are arbitrary and capricious, and that they put forward an unfair, essentially unfair burden on the, the taxpayer in the state of New York related to the inability to deduct charitable contributions on top of the inability to deduct property taxes over ten thousand dollars per year. So we are going to continue to wait and see in terms of where the, the regulations shake out, but the board has been very supportive in, of course, always supporting our taxpayers, and, and looking for ways to try and mitigate the challenges that have come forward with the state and local tax deduction proposed regulation, which disproportionately impacts high-tax states, of which, of course, New York is one. So we'll, we'll continue to press hard, to, to look for every avenue to, to be able to support our, our community members and our taxpayers, and thanks to the board for, for having the foresight to, to enter into, into the coalition as well.
I think it's great, too, that Assemblywoman Amy Pollan...
Yep.
Worked with, worked with putting that syndicate of communities, because it's also communities, towns, towns, villages, school districts, and this is really our opportunity to, to say something and, and work to have a voice, and like you mentioned, Dr. Rika, the Common Period is over now, but the school district's comments have, have been submitted, and, and we have that voice, so I think that's very important support to our resident taxpayers as well.
And the city of White Plains is supportive of this.
Yes, indeed. Thank you.
So thank you for bringing it to us. Thanks to Assemblywoman Pollan.
And thank you, Kane, for keeping us on point.
I'm sure the resolution, I'm sure fifteen, forgot that. Move it forward.
Yeah, part of our advocacy, which is part of our, our board goals, so, you know, thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll move on to board discussions for board committee reports. And before we do that, I didn't say in the beginning Randy Stein and Rose Lovish had, are traveling and could not be here tonight, so I wanted to extend their apologies for not being here. And now we can go to board committee reports. And I can start with Special Ed, because you and I were not here. And Rose, you met with Rose graciously, and she's not here now, but we do look forward to our trip on this Wednesday...
Next Thursday.
Oh, next Thursday, to Ridgeway, so we thank you for that, and thank you for your patience as well. Sorry.
Curriculum and instruction, Dr. Hand gave the presentation, that's what we discussed in our committee, and in finance, we discussed the audit, so made it easy for reporting out.
Yep, and I also know that HR meant I had a work commitment there, but we wouldn't be able to give all the details anyway, but I assume that our open positions are being pursued as appropriate and on schedule, so thank you for that. So before I ask for a motion to go into exec session, just want to thank everyone who came tonight. Congratulations, congratulations to Amerenick Avenue School, the spirit, spirit, the first Spirit Champions. Also, thank you to...
You should sing their song.
Also, to John Shepherd and John Misavich for taping us tonight, appreciated, and for all the presentations that we had tonight. Thank you very much for those, and I hope I didn't forget anything or anyone. Congratulations to you, Michelle, you're an Emmy, you're a winner, you're an Emmy winner.
You have to have that, that trophy needs to stay there every meeting for the remainder of the year.
Chain it down.
So may I have a, a motion to go into executive session to discuss matters of personnel?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.